Okay.
We are.
All right, so I'm going to open the February 4th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. And, uh... Uh, first thing is, oh, there it is, this, oh, pledge allegiance. So, pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, in the law of the free and justice of all. Nice. All right, first up is we're welcoming our Planning Commission Commissioner, Joe Morrison. Welcome.
Hi, everybody.
Does anybody want to go on the table and just say who you are, so he, because we don't have names?
Sure, Nick Bond, I'm the Development Director.
Carrie Sollee, long-range planner.
Sue Ann Martin Smith, homemade cafe owner.
Annette Stewart.
Dave Bernstein.
Martin Trinari.
None of you are saying who you are.
We, yeah, we are, we're just not saying where we work.
You, you don't have to.
It's a secret.
Okay.
South, South will get through.
I won't do that either.
We're supposed to tell us a little bit about ourselves.
We're all being mysterious.
No, it's Joe's job to tell us, tell us what.
Sorry, Trish?
I'm Trish Tierney, and I work at the school district. Second day today.
Yay, congratulations.
Stephanie Bailey.
Hi, Stephanie, I'm Joe Morrison. Joe Morrison.
You want to share your background?
Nope.
We're not sharing, we're not sharing. Who is your daddy?
Uh, my dad was also Joe Morrison. Um, so moved to Port Orchard three years ago. Uh, I manage a small economic development-oriented investment fund for the city of Anchorage. I'm an Anchorage kid, I grew up there, I lived there for a long time, I still fly back every month, I still work for the city of Anchorage. I've been doing that for about seven years. And so, that's me, I live just about a block away, I've been to your place more than a few times.
I recognize you.
Can we do names one more time? What, one more?
Sue Ann.
Sue Ann.
Annette.
Annette, Dave, Mark, Sherry? No.
Trish.
Trish.
Stephanie.
Stephanie.
My name is so crazy. It's Sherry on the weekend, so.
Sue Ann?
Yeah.
After 11 o'clock.
Sue Ann. Trish. Stephanie. We'll see how I do. It'll take an hour.
All right, so, um, next up, election of the Chair and the Vice Chair. So, is there any nominations for...
If you're happy to do it again, I'll nominate you.
Right back at you, sister.
I almost tried to jump in on that second.
Who is the second, please?
He said, "work."
Okay.
And, uh, for Vice, I think if the, it's not broken, let's not fix it.
Second, perfect. Okay? Okay.
Stats, well.
Nobody else wants to do it?
Uh, no.
Well, it just makes sense, you guys are the ones that have gone on it the longest. Oh, all in favor? All in favor?
Bye.
All those opposed? Nope. Who's?
Is that for both of them, or do we do one at a time?
We did it as a group, as a pair.
Yeah, we came as a pair.
We came as a pair.
We did.
So, we'll have to leave as a pair.
Uh-oh. Did you start the same month?
Yeah, the same year.
Oh, wow.
How long's it been?
January 2003.
Yep.
Wow.
Probably the senior members.
Well, I'm the next senior, and I started in September of 2013, so 10 years later.
We lost a lot of people.
Yeah.
My mom was upon the commission, back in the 60s, for a year.
That's awesome.
Uh, so anyway, uh, so, do you want to do the approval of the minutes now? I thought we did that at the end, or did we change it for some reason?
You had asked, I don't know, you did, the commission asked me to change it.
Oh.
To refresh our memory on old business.
Okay. So, let's got those.
Ah, yes, I see mine up. I will need to approve the minutes from the November 5th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting as written.
Was I there?
You were there.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, there you go.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Alrighty, so now we're to the, uh, number four business item, discussion recommendations of the tree canopy and significant tree code.
All right, um, so before each night is the latest version of the tree canopy, uh, and significant tree code. Uh, if you'll remember, we started this discussion back in, uh, the summer of 2019, and it's sort of evolved, I think Commissioner Bernstein brought up a number of, uh, questions and concerns about this, and what we realized we were doing was we were really focusing on new development, but in that we had kind of lost the protection of these existing significant trees in and around town where they're onesie-twosie type trees, as opposed to when they're doing mass grading for site development. And so, we took some of the pieces of our old significant key, uh, tree code and, uh, joined them with the new tree canopy requirement chapter that is proposed. And to illustrate the problem, just to refresh your memory, and now that this project has been approved, we had a, a hearing last Thursday and approved, uh, 50 lots here at Geiger and Blueberry. And this is a site where the entire site, as it exists today, is forested, and what we realized through the process is that our existing, uh, significant tree code says that when you cut a significant tree, you have to replace it at a specified ratio. But when your entire site is fully forested and significant trees, it is very hard to plant this many trees, I think they would have had to plant like a thousand trees to replace 400 that they're cutting. They, there wouldn't be any room for houses, much less the trees that were needed.
Be a bigger forest.
And so, the, the, um, the goal here was to, we really wanted to look at long-term development patterns and trying to make sure that as neighborhoods develop, they become tree over time. And this development that the county approved prior to us annexing this Coda Circle development, I think is a really good example of a development that was cleared and very few trees were planted, I think this was done in the late 90s or early 2000s. And I would say that as it is today, there's probably 10% tree canopy. And so, our goal was to establish a number that after 20 years of, of tree growth, we get to about 30% tree canopy for single-family development and lower percentages for other types of development. However, when you have situations, and I'm going to pick on Councilmember Ashby because this came up recently, uh, she called the city because there is a big significant tree near her house, uh, between Fregate and Perry, and she was concerned that the loggers were about to cut it down, and it was a significant tree, probably 30 inches in diameter. And she said, "Can you please make sure that they know the rules and that they don't cut this without, uh, at least having a plan to replace it?" And it turns out they weren't actually going to cut the tree, but nonetheless, um, in this environment, our goal really is to preserve some of these significant trees in established neighborhoods. So, the, the ordinance that we have before you really seeks to do both, it, it does require replacement of existing significant trees, but when you're doing development, it requires the establishment of a long-term tree canopy, so it lets you take the trees, provided that you get to a, a reasonable level of tree canopy. And I think, um, the mayor and Commissioner Bernstein and Carrie and I met earlier, uh, I guess, was it last week, um, just to talk about these concerns more generally, because I think he, David, came up with most of the suggested changes. And we talked about, you know, I, I found a couple of examples, I think there's a block here between Shroof and West, and I would say that this is an established block in a city, and you're probably 20 to 30% tree canopy, uh, in this general area, and so, that's sort of the goal, is to get trees in our neighborhood, and whether it's street trees that are planted along the sidewalk, or whether it's trees in yards, because people want a, a more woodsy feel on their, their particular block, or if it's like McCormick Woods, where you set aside, um, big tracts of, um, oops, I'm in the wrong, I put a parcel search, I can actually click on the parcel and show you. They've preserved swaths of trees in these open space tracts that are, that remain forested, while there's very few trees actually in the development, so people can have some yards, but I think, you know, a 30% number, the goal was to provide some flexibility, but still to, to preserve trees in the community. That's not to say it can't be 35% or 25% if the Planning Commission felt that another number is right, we, we really haven't studied the numbers in great detail, we're relying on the work that Snohomish County did when they, uh, provided the template for the ordinance.
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
When you said about people planting trees, for instance, like on the sidewalk, there used to be trees out here, it looks like. Uh, can, can anyone, I mean, if you on the property across from it, can I plant a tree there?
Talk to Public Works. There, there's some places where it would not be good to plant trees because of utilities, or if, if the landscape script is really narrow, you're more likely to buckle the sidewalk, or if there aren't real areas.
So, what if you put it in a pot, then it's not a big deal?
If you're putting it in a pot, then it's something that could be hazardous if somebody trips over it, so we allow it, but you have to get a, you just have to apply for permission, so that you're saying that you're going to indemnify the city and, uh...
Because it just looks like we used to have a lot more trees downtown here, and they're gone, they're all, there's grades down there, you know?
Yeah, they're now a requirement of building and improving streets going forward, but the existing streets, uh, until they get replaced or repaired, it's not a requirement to have those, but they're certainly allowed, we just have to look at them on a case-by-case basis to figure out what, what type of tree is appropriate.
Yeah.
Or species or something.
Yeah, I'd talk to Bill.
Okay.
So, I think, you know, the, the draft chapter that we've provided you in, in both redline and a clean copy, this is redlined from the original version of the ordinance that we provided to you. I think it does a pretty good job of both aiming for a long-term level of, of coverage, depending on the type of development and protecting trees.
It's not the original version, that's from the April, this is...
Gotcha, so this is a later version.
This is the, um, November version.
I was just going to ask, so it's the same version that went out in our, for our December packets?
Um, it, the last time we met was actually November, and this is the last version we discussed, nothing's been changed since the last meeting.
Okay.
Correct.
It was the one that we were supposed to use in December.
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So, if there are any questions or concerns, I, I think our goal, um, is to get this before the City Council with a recommendation from the Planning Commission, but obviously, it's got to be in a, a form that this group likes, and so, um, I don't know if there's, there's any comments, questions, edits.
How are you feeling about that?
A whole lot better than when it first came to the committee or the commission. I still have some more comments to make, but I think they're easily surmountable for the most part, so.
Do you want to go first?
You want me to get going on it?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm going to pull up the draft ordinance, just so I can edit this in real time.
And those first two points on the, the 20.129.020, need, helped me a lot to clarify.
Tell us where you're at.
Oh, this is one that I did and do it, and converted into a Word document, so I can put my edits into it. So, I would work off of this one.
Same one? Okay, 020 applicability.
Right, the very beginning, under applicability, yeah. Just clarify that those first two lines, the significant tree policy is citywide across commercial, residential, all zones, whereas the canopy is just residential, which took me a while to realize that they're really two separate policies that are kind of merged in together, and they cover two different sets of zones. On this first page, if you look at 3F, qualified arborist, and then the next section under definitions, you got licensed arborist, and then number three, it says certified arborist.
I have no idea where you are.
I'm qualified.
Where are you at?
Where are you at, dude?
I'm, I'm at 20.129.020.
My F is removal of hazardous.
Yeah, there's a qualified.
There's a qualified.
Oh, I see, I see, okay, sorry.
Now, if you go down to number, the next definitions.
Yes?
Number two.
Oh, okay, great.
It has down as licensed.
I'm not seeing number two yet.
I'm still not finding where you are.
Do I have an old, older one?
The end of F.
License.
No.
If that's any hazardous, better these trees, and if it's a city that's really in a...
Under definitions, there it is, number two, under definitions. You just went past, at that line, they're on there, licensed.
Okay, licensed, right here.
So, Dave, are you looking for consistency?
Exactly.
Related to the term arborist.
Yeah, licensed or qualified.
And if you look at number three, it says certified. So, we have three different versions for arborist.
We can, we'll clarify that with whatever.
Oh, I see, qualified, licensed, and, right.
Right.
So, is an arborist, is that an actual license or a certification?
I, I need to double-check that, I don't remember.
Well, the Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.12 says, quote, "Arborist means an individual trained in art and science of planting, caring for, and maintaining individual trees, and who is currently certified by the International Society of Arborco..."
So, we have a definition for arborists?
So, you have it under...
I should just get rid of all the qualifiers and just say arborist.
And then, if you want to cite it, it's 20.12.
Okay. And that would be an arborist.
Nick, how would you like to do this, I've got some comments also, but back in the applicability area, do you want him to just go through all of his?
Why don't we go through David's, and then we'll, yeah.
Okay, rather than section by section, that's fine, whatever you want, it's fine with me.
Okay.
In that exceptions, under applicability, three, the exceptions.
Uh-huh.
We had talked about trees in containers, commercial nurseries, Christmas tree farms, and emergencies. And I didn't see it in there.
Those were in Dave's comments, and so, that, you had done a response to his comments, but those weren't incorporated into this version.
Gotcha, so add, I'm just going to make myself a note here.
Containers, tree containers, commercial nurseries. Christmas tree farms and emergencies.
Do we need to definition of emergency?
And that was, we had started to talk about that.
What were, what else was it, Christmas tree farms?
Christmas tree, Christmas tree farms and emergencies.
Okay. I'll, I'll clean that up. And, uh, once we bring this to council.
Now, under definitions, number two, where we talk about significant trees. And we're, we started off with an 18-inch, I'm not sure where that originally came from, probably in the original significant tree.
That's in the old code, yeah.
But to give you an idea, um, Carrie found a reference that Douglas fir takes 50 years to get to be 11 inches in diameter.
Wow.
So, give you an idea that a much smaller tree to get, takes 50 years for a Douglas fir, now Douglas fir, I think, is a slow-growing tree? I don't know. Other cities.
They grow pretty quick.
They're pretty quick.
Are they quick, okay. So, it takes 50 years for a, a quick-growing tree to get to 11 inches, and we're talking 18. And I don't know if it's exponential, but 11 to 18, that makes it a 75 or 80-year-old tree then? Other cities, um, their significant tree numbers, um, North Bend is 15 inches, Muckletillo is 12 inches, Paulsboro is 10 inches, Bellevue is 8 inches. Bremerton has 8 inches for evergreen trees, 12 inches for deciduous, and Geek Harbor has 6 inch trees. So, I think our 18 inches is a little high.
High, Nick. Well, and do we want to specify between evergreen and deciduous?
I didn't think that was a bad idea, but I, it would surprise me when I saw that in the Bremerton code.
How hard does that make it, if that's, if that comes into play?
It's hard to say. It's harder, but I, I think, one of them, did you say it was 18 for evergreens and 12 for?
8 for evergreens and 12 for deciduous, and that was Bremerton. And I can leave this with you.
Yeah, I mean, whatever the Planning Commission wants to recommend is, is fine, um...
Well, if you use a benchmark of, um, a Douglas fir at 50 years is 11 inches, I mean, and you're using 20 years as a canopy cover goal.
Yeah.
Um, seems to me that needs to be dialed down, I don't think the Bremerton, um, recommendations are a bad idea, the 8 and 12.
I think it's a great idea.
I like it too.
I do too.
So, that would be the direction I'd probably recommend, is the Bremerton.
8 is 12? We can clean that up.
We know what that means.
What did you, what did you?
Yeah.
What did you say, the Geek Harbor ones?
6 inches.
All right.
Um, let's see. Under the next section, where removal and replacement of significant trees. Under number 3A. Where you're giving one-to-one ratio, since we're talking, since we kind of went with that deciduous tree and evergreen tree size, are we talking replacing deciduous for deciduous, and/or evergreen to evergreen, or they can mix and match, or they choose?
We need a second table, and we'd have to have a, a schedule for evergreen trees and a schedule for deciduous trees.
Right, I mean, I really don't have a strong preference on one or the other, but...
I think it should be like-for-like.
But...
Yeah, I...
That was my inclination, just didn't have a strong, wasn't a dial, I'll just dial.
Yeah, if it's graduated, we need a second table, and it's going to have to have a different range here, I think we would like to probably keep these ratios the same, but change the, the spread between the, you know, if it's, if it's 12 inches in diameter, then it's probably 12 to 18, and then 18 to, to 26 or something, and, you know, we'll...
Right, but it's also going to be a little different deciduous to...
Right, right.
Yeah, so when they go to replace it, do they have to say, "This is the deciduous tree I'm replacing, so I'm going to replace it with deciduous" by the graph?
Sure.
So, when this gets brought to City Council, will they be able to know, like, what you just told us, what some of the other cities?
We're going to say this is redlined, so it'll be in redline for them to know what the Planning Commission recommendations were.
And that others, what other cities are doing is my point, so they just don't shut it down like it's not important?
Um, can you make a note of that and just put it in like a comment?
I think it's important.
Yeah, it was a good reference point, so.
Do you...
I'll give you this full copy when I'm done.
Yeah, what they're doing in other, um, cities, and then I can send that to you.
Yeah, it's in my, I can either send this to you PDF or, or a Word document, or give you this one. Because it's, I just put it in my notes here, so.
Okay, whatever's easier.
I don't have the actual code, website numbers, I didn't save that.
No, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
So, yeah, and then my other point was what you had just said, was that the significant tree diameters and ratios would have to be updated according to what we had just decided on, sure, trees.
And I definitely think it should be a like-for-like, if you take out a deciduous, put back a deciduous. We don't want to lose a bunch of valuable evergreens to a bunch of ornith...
Miniature or something.
Well, because maple trees are $5 apiece at the, at the nursery versus $20 for a Doug Douglas fir or whatever.
Yeah.
Maple trees are wild down here on the corner, if you guys need any.
I'm always going to salvage more than that.
All right. All right, same section now, number 3. F and G.
What?
So, I think that this one, the comment was, this puts a lot on to the director, you know, um, would you be more comfortable saying that you have an arborist input on that, versus you making the call on that pitch?
I think we have, we have lists of, of native species, there's plenty of resources on that.
Okay.
Shouldn't be too hard.
And then on number G, or letter G, line, the section, where they're obliged to replace, and we started to talk about this a little bit, um, I think you had said it was supposed to be, you know, ongoing, or, in our conversations, um, with regards to monitoring, and the patient, and the doc, and the owners have to maintain those, uh, trees that they put in and healthy condition, et cetera.
So, when we approve, like, either a subdivision, first of all, there's a maintenance bond for a period of time, and that bond is to guarantee that things are maintained. However, the code requires that if you're going to, if you have an approved landscape plan and you want to amend it, you have to seek permission to amend it, and so, if you're going to remove vegetation that was previously required, you can't do that without submitting something for review, and if you were to remove it, it's a violation of your permit, your original permit, and it would be enforced as a zoning violation. So, we already have the tools in place to enforce this.
Okay. And then how do you monitor it?
Uh, best we can.
Does it take manpower, does somebody run out there and look at it? Have them send photos in of their landscape?
We will do, we do the inspection at two years and five years after a landscape plan, I believe, to, to verify that things are in good shape. Beyond that, it, it's going to take somebody calling and saying, "Hey, my neighbor's cutting down all their trees," for us to, to do anything, because that's a pretty low-level priority for us, but it's, it's still a violation for somebody to remove those trees, and if it's discovered, it can be enforced. And you, and you need a permit to cut trees anyway, so you, not only would you be violating the terms of your approved landscape plan, but you're also removing trees without a permit, as required under our, our land disturbing activity.
Well, and that's if they are intentionally taken out versus they died, you know, at five years of age, and nobody bothered to replace them.
Sure.
And now they're, you know, they're past their five-year inspection, the tree dead, fall over, went away, and who's there to say, "Oh, well, that's supposed to be a tree there."
We don't have anybody, that's beyond the resources of, of our city.
So, if I, if I build a house and I follow this tree thing and I sell it two years later, does that person have any, I mean, are they still responsible?
Uh, it depends whether it's part of a subdivision or not.
Okay.
Because to remove a significant tree, yes, you're still, you're always responsible, because you can't remove significant trees without complying with the code. If it was required landscaping as part of your subdivision, you're responsible, and that's part of your subdivision approval is, is your landscape plan. Although, is somebody actually going to, to be aware of that, it depends how thoroughly they look in, into their title report. But if it's a one-off house that's in the old part of the city, that's been around for 100 years, uh, they're not going to have much idea of what is allowed and not allowed in terms of tree removal.
Okay, and if they have a significant tree on your property, and you have an old piece of property, and that tree is dying, and you take it down, is that...
It becomes a hazardous tree.
Yeah, it's a hazardous tree at that point, yeah.
Yeah. And hazardous trees can come down.
Does that have to be a process, a hazardous tree or a dangerous tree?
That's under the exception, so you have to have the arborist, um, removal of a hazardous, dead diseased tree as determined by an, an arborist, so if you have documentation from the arborist, you're allowed to take that tree down.
Do you have an... So, I took, no, I just took a big old maple tree down that was dying, I didn't call anybody except Ron to come take it down. It's going to fall on my house.
Now that they know.
I don't think a lot of people know, actually, I don't think.
I didn't know, I mean, a few years ago, we took down a plum tree that had gotten so big, it was splitting in half, and it was rotting from the inside, and it was threatening our foundation, and we were like, "Hey, Miguel, our neighbor, come take our tree down." Yeah.
Oh, there's two, I'd be in trouble.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
I keep my mouth shut.
Hey, we just added a...
Number 3, that 18 inches, um, at breast height has to be updated then. Now, we get to tree canopy requirements for residential development, this is the percentages that you had talked about. From that table. Reiterate that these are percentages based on coverage 20 years after planting. Uh, and you throw in that comment, or that piece of information about Douglas fir taking 20 years to get to 11-inch diameter. Personally, I wouldn't mind seeing these percentages up a little bit.
I think, um, I think you can recommend slightly higher numbers, but if you remember how little the Douglas fir has grown in 20 years, 30% in 20 years is maybe 50% in 50 years. And I'm not sure that everybody wants to live in the woods versus being able to have a garden or sunlight on their yard. So, I, I don't know the science behind these numbers, and I would caution you from deviating too radically from them, but I think that small deviations are probably acceptable. But, you know, it's going to be 20 years before we, we actually see the result of this.
Actually, more than 20 years, because you've got to get five or 10 years' worth of building in.
Yeah.
And then the 20 years.
Right. I think it's, I think when you get into, um, more of the multifamily-type stuff, I would not deviate as much, because I think it's going to be much harder, uh, for the, because this pattern of development allows for greater lot coverage. I don't, I think, once you have surface parking and buildings, um, you know, there's going to be very little room left over if you go above 15% here. And that would be for things like playgrounds or lawn areas, so, um, but for the, the, the detached residential, you know, 35 is doable. But again, I don't know what that looks like after 50 years.
At the beginning of the...
I'm not going to be around to know.
Exactly.
Well, now, I was just throwing that out for people.
What's the source in the science behind the statute?
Well, so, this code was recommended to us, um, Snohomish County did a study, and they were, they, using GIS, were able to do a tree canopy inventory of their existing areas. And in their established neighborhoods, they were finding that, I, I think they did a, like, preference survey, they looked at the existing neighborhoods and determined that in urban areas, 30% for a single-family neighborhood was what they wanted to target as a goal, and it was something they felt that was achievable. That's Snohomish County, not Port Orchard, we don't have the resources to do, to do that same sort of study, you know, on a, a small staff and limited budget, but we think that those numbers are probably appropriate for a place like Port Orchard. And that's the urban part of the county, so it's the urban growth area surrounding Everett and Marysville, and, you know, they are urban parts of, of the county, not the rural parts.
You pointed out this development that you weren't happy with, and I'm being colloquial, but you said that, you know, there was one development where the, the tree replacement and the canopies just weren't necessarily what I think you would have liked to have seen. where the, the tree replacement and the canopies just weren't necessarily what I think you would have liked to have seen. I don't recall which development it was.
Yeah, we go, I think it was this one.
Yeah, Coda.
So yeah, if you go over to Coda, you, you will see that they do have some trees on the back of the curb here in the front yards. But it's, it's pretty limited, I mean, I would say that you've got a little bit of trees that kind of come from the, the west there, but that's probably fifteen percent, and this is about twenty or thirty years old.
But, you know, if you look at that, if you look at all those trees to the left, that's the same what McCormick Woods has, I mean, someone could come in and take those down too.
Exactly, those start guaranteed to stay.
Yeah, so just because it's.
Can't really take those in the.
So go into, I mean, if you go into the street view on Google.
It looks pretty bare.
Well, this is, yeah, these are. It's not terrible, I mean, they do have trees.
I would say it was gorgeous.
No, god, no.
Isn't that cute, they're all the same color.
So.
Is that what affordable looks like?
So anyway, that's, you know, that's one example, and the McCormick examples, the newer ones, aren't that different. In the central area of the neighborhood, it's just that they have these buffers around the outside and that's how they've chosen to preserve their trees.
How old are those McCormick?
Strathmore is probably about twenty years old now, I think they built that before the recession.
Pop down to a street view.
Yeah, but it doesn't have.
I don't know, it looks the same.
Let's see what it looks like.
Can you get to a street view on that?
And keep in mind, at least, some of these have alley load garages and so that changes the feeling of the streetscape. And a lot of the green that you see is not trees, but just other types of landscaping. But.
So the trees do look more prominent to me.
And what is the percentage on this one?
Uh, I don't know the exact number, I mean, it, it's hard to say because, let me go to parcel search again.
But also the other ones, yeah, but they can't have grass because they have to have, they have short driveways and everything. I mean, those other McCormick Woods have yards.
So Strathmore has these tracks off the side that are dedicated for open space. And the HOA controls those and they can't be developed in addition to having street trees. If I were to, once you include that parcel, um, there's this one here, there's another one up on that goes all the way around. I mean, this is probably close to forty or forty-five percent, I would guess, maybe, maybe a little less, it's hard to say. I'm just eyeballing it.
And I think using this, they can be creative and get those percentages up by doing things like this.
Right, but the, the challenge you're running into is housing development costs are going way up. If you look at the construction cost index relative to inflation, it's like double the rate of inflation for the last ten years. So when you're, these things were built at a time when construction costs were far lower and being able to provide this is becoming less and less feasible as well. So there's the, the pull of affordable housing as well as the desire to have green areas. And, uh, the more trees that you require, the harder it's, you're gonna have to find space for those trees.
So Nick, the Coda circle development, essentially, you think you would have avoided that outcome if you would have had the, this proposed, this proposed change to code?
Correct, because they would have had to have a landscape plan that showed that in twenty years, you were gonna have thirty percent tree canopy. So maybe it would have been that they, um, increased the buffers on one side, I mean, let me, and, and first of all, Coda is, is maybe a bad example because they don't have any sidewalks or, um, the landscape strips here. So everything is behind that, they've got the interior sidewalk, there's no sidewalk around these lots, it's just a curb. So if they had had, right now, the code requires you to do a sidewalk with a, either a four or a six foot landscape strip, depending on whether there's on-street parking or not. And so in that landscape strip, you put trees twenty-five feet on center. And that alone has a huge impact on the amount of tree canopy that you have in your neighborhood. So this would be a lot. Yeah, yeah. So that's part of the percentage that is lost here.
And so for this kind of development, you'd be expecting thirty percent, right? Just have single family subdivision.
Correct.
Okay.
We have a regulation.
Hey Nick, can you go back to McCormick Woods, please?
Which area?
Uh, where you were saying, yes. Okay, so looking at their green space, roughly, we'll pretend thirty percent. So let's say that that land was all just raw land at this point and somebody was coming in to develop. And they're supposed to maintain, it's supposed to be thirty percent at twenty years. Well, unlike with McCormick Woods, they actually preserved the trees and just took out what needed to be taken out. Is there something to prevent a developer now from going in there and literally taking out every tree and then planting their, what will be thirty percent in twenty years?
There, there's a few things, um, but I think the answer is that's really hard to do because when you look at the available land in Port Orchard, the easy sites have been developed. And only, the only thing less left is hard sites that require more grading, more earthwork and things that just don't always cooperate with retaining trees. So I, I think that the, you have to keep your eye on the long term. There are benefits in terms of stormwater and other things to preserve trees where you can, but I don't think it's possible to hit urban level densities of development while preserving existing stands of forest. And the other thing that you've got is the blowdown risk when you have a storm. And if you go to, uh, Andazio over here, when, uh, pre-tornado, uh, try to say a tornado is more severe than other things. This whole strip, they left this strip of, of trees on the edge that was supposed to be part of like a twenty-foot landscape buffer. And I think half of these trees are now gone from wind taking them down because they're just not, they're not equipped to survive that. So, so trying to preserve the existing hand of forest is really difficult in our climate with, with the level of wind that we have.
With the example of McCormick Woods, those were, that was a thick enough buffer that they would withstand and did withstand the wind. So I would just hate to see that, that someone's like, okay, well, it's just, it's thirty percent in twenty years. I'm gonna take that thirty percent out right now because they're large and just plant a bunch of small trees and.
I agree with you.
And, well, we won't, we have the thirty percent now, but we're gonna log it and it'll come back in twenty years.
Yeah, there's, unfortunately, there's sites that you just, you can't do that. It's just, it's not possible to actually make a viable use of the land, especially, I mentioned the hard sites are left. It's not just hard from a topography standpoint or a critical area standpoint, it's hard from an infrastructure standpoint where you're having to pay for significant extensions of water and sewer. And, um, it, we have an obligation to, to plan for a certain amount of growth. And, um, the developers paying for the cost of that growth with infrastructure is a big piece of that. And, um, when you start trying to preserve or trying to make them work around stands of trees within an existing development, that's no longer viable.
But the significant tree still holds.
Yeah, you still are replacing it.
If they're taking out, they're cutting this, they still have to address the significant trees.
Theoretically, if they're taking out a bunch of old growth, they have to replace it three to one, right?
I gotta look at that and remember how it.
Well, depends upon the size of the tree.
You still will achieve your thirty percent until twenty years out, when you've already got it.
Right.
And it's just like.
And they get credit for saving significant trees towards their replacement.
Which helps them, so they're.
Which gives them some motivation.
But like, look at the ones that they kept the strip, they got credit for that and then the wind blew them down, so.
But that was poorly planned because.
But, but, but somebody could poorly plan again.
But that's what part of their, you know, approval process for the trees is supposed to catch, I would think that. You leave a single row of pine trees from a forest down a, down a strip of land. Nick should pick that up and say, uh, this isn't gonna work.
Yeah.
Now granted, you're counting on Nick being there to catch that, but, I mean, it's common sense.
So yeah, I guess the incentives are there to retain those existing trees, but we have to, we have to accept that that's not always workable. So with that said, you were talking about the percentages here and whether you want to.
Yeah, I'm inclined to bump them by five percent, but I'm not strong opinion on it, it's just, I think, personally, I think more is better myself, but.
Anybody else have a thought on that?
I would take the detached, I would agree with him on the detached, the top two.
So thirty-five and thirty.
Yeah, I would boost those, I would agree to, the boost them five percent. I mean, it's a good target, the more the merrier when it comes to.
What's a cottage court again?
That's a cottage, a cluster of cottage housing.
Let me just ask another question, are these exact numbers from Snohomish?
They are. Although, although when it comes to, um, the building types here, our code is a little bit different, but we've adapted duplexes, triplexes, attached housing, I think they just say multifamily development, more than ten units. We've actually specified the building types, um, and, and tried to adapt to the best we can for those.
We also added the one single family house in the middle, that's.
Oh, there you go. Gotcha, yeah, so if you're, if you have a one-off lot in the city, we're not looking to make you turn it into a forest just to build one house.
And that's a quarter acre lot or bigger.
Correct.
The one above, the detached housing residential subdivisions and short plats, four or fewer. For those four or fewer lots, how large are those lots tending to be?
They can be as little, I mean, they can be down to the minimum lot size. I think the challenge here though is that those subdivisions don't require the street trees in the same way because you're typically just going to share driveway or some other configuration where they're just, and, and once you do stormwater in that shared driveway, it's harder to get trees into a, a smaller site like that. So we're trying to encourage infill development and we want trees there, but we have to accept the reality of, of designing that sort of thing. I think once you're laying out streets, it becomes easier through street to meet the, uh, the percentage requirement.
It seems it would be easy to increase that fifteen percent of one single family house or one duplex on a large lot.
It would be, but do you wanna force somebody to plant trees rather than having a yard for their kids to play on or? I mean, it's, um, I think there's personal factors here in it.
The, the difference is with a subdivision, you know, you can put it on the outside, like the McCormick buffers, or it can be in the street trees or in other areas. Here, you would only have your own lot to put that on, so it could end up in quite a lot of trees.
Trying to think of where we might have a lot right now that's.
I have, there's one being built on right by my house.
Yeah, there'll be people who keep.
Yeah. There's more than fifteen percent.
It's all just dirt.
And I think the goal there was just to require some amount of landscaping as part of their building a house. Because right now, single family houses don't have to provide anything and sometimes they don't.
Yeah, there was a house built last summer right by my house. There's no trees, yeah, on Hol. In between Taylor and Smith.
Yeah, there you go.
That's nice.
I suspect.
That house is now built, I believe, and they're working on another one, they just did the foundation. And all last week, they were using the, they were vibroplating the dirt, that was really fun.
They were what?
Vibroplating.
Give you cracks in the house and.
I think that's, is that this one?
Possible.
And you see, these guys go, it goes down the hill to Port Orchard Boulevard and they have all those trees back there, so they would need it by default.
That's a cop out.
So the question becomes, do we wanna leave all these as is or do we wanna increase some of them? I think your suggestion is the two top ones going up.
I know, I mean, I wanna encourage development, but I also wanna keep trees.
Well, we're talking twenty years out.
Right.
I just don't wanna clean gutters.
Well, you get those gutter guards that you see on those commercials that nobody ever gets, they don't work.
Gutter stoppers do. I've had the gutter stoppers in for years, they're fine.
So thirty-five, I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing consensus on changing the top one to thirty-five. There we go, and the next one to thirty.
Yeah.
Come on. My number lock is turned off. Alright.
Alright, I think we're coming down to the last one, one more I got here. And this is gonna be under the. After that twenty-year canopy coverage comment. And why you keep on going down. It's the section above the twenty point one two nine point zero seven zero. Clusters of stands of five trees, more trees, each tree shall be counted as one hundred percent, one hundred and fifty percent of actual canopy cover or canopy area. Do we need to define caliper size on those because they could have a whole five seedlings, call it a cluster? I would think half a caliper size of a, half a significant tree caliper. So whatever we decided on the, on the caliper.
Six inch D V H, something like that.
Yeah, or if we're using the eight and twelve, four and six. And that would be fifty percent of a significant tree. Alright, I'm done.
Yeah, well, I don't know what number to put there, but we'll noodle on it.
Good comments, Tim.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Alright, so you had some at the beginning, right, Stephanie?
I do, yeah. And then bear with me, I prepared this for a December meeting and I haven't done it since, so I may have to refresh my memory on why I jotted some of my notes. But if you had a twenty point one two nine point zero two zero. Okay, so this one, under A, exemptions A. Uh, talking about construction of private roads are exempt. And that, you'll remember this, remember when Indigo Point went in, we even did the site visit up there and they had those big, beautiful old growth trees. And they literally designed their road to take them all out. I mean, they just laid out the whole plat and they nailed every significant tree. Because it was exempt from the road.
That's an interesting point, I had not thought of that.
And, you know, in the, yeah, but is there a way we can prevent that from happening?
Well, so when you're built, when this is talking about road projects, let me get back to it. I think if you're at the subdivision phase, the tree, the tree preservation applies to the subdivision. So you're not exempt, you're not yet constructing private roads at the time that you're applying for a subdivision. The subdivision that you submit has to meet these requirements. This would be like, if you, if you've got a vacant piece of property and you wanna put in a road to access, you know, to access your property outside of, I don't know, I guess that would, that wouldn't even be exempt. I think this is really thinking about like the Tremont Street project, we're putting in street trees as part of the project, but we're not, we're not gonna replace significant trees that have to come out because we're widening a road or doing some sort of public project. But we will meet the public work standards that have been adopted, which includes street trees.
So that addresses the public, what about private roads?
Private roads, yeah.
Take the private out of there.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose I don't have a problem with private road networks. What about private utilities, I suppose if you're trying to put in a water line or a service or septic system or, you know, there's some things that.
I don't think there's more constraints than your options to put those things in place.
I definitely understand like, well, they wouldn't be on a drain field and city limits, right? Is everybody sewered within city limits?
No, they're septic.
I have a septic, I have two of them.
Still on septic. I couldn't afford to extend the sewer to my house.
That's nasty, yeah.
Way pricey.
Well, thank you.
Okay, now. Twenty point one two nine point zero four zero, so remove or replace my significant trees. Three A in highlight and, and it was, it says at no less than a one-to-one ratio. But then the table below it has a point five.
So the idea there is that some developments may have a mix of trees. And so if, if for some reason you had only eighteen to twenty-two inch trees, you can't be less than a one-to-one ratio, even though those trees get. even though those trees get replaced in a lower one. The idea is that if you have a mix of tree sizes, it should average out to be more than one, but in the event that it doesn't, it's got to be at least one. So we're, and and this number's going to now change in terms of the diameter, but some trees that are smaller, we didn't feel like you needed to replace it in a one-to-one ratio. You could replace it in a lesser ratio so long as the total tree replacement was one-to-one.
All right, thank you. Twenty page, so we're still under that same chapter. Now this would be three subsection C. Oh, yes, it's my notes. So basically, I think it addresses C, D, and E. My notes say, replace like with like, not evergreen with a deciduous, so we'll.
Oh, so we've got that covered already.
Covered earlier. Uh, moving down, then to subsection F.
Which heading are we under still?
Oh, I'm, we're still under twenty point one-two-nine point zero-four-zero, removal and replacement. Uh, three, section three, subsection F. Okay, bear with me, lots of notes. All right, so under F itself, when they just did um, the director shall defer to species selected by the property owner unless the director determines a species selected, blah, blah, blah. I'm just, I know that you know, Nick, but if there's a new director that comes on board, do they necessarily know native species?
I mean, I think there's, there's a plant guide as part of our, there's the low-impact development guide for plants for planting rain gardens. There's, there's so many resources on what is desired, but.
Do we want to refer to those lists in here?
We can try to mine up this, yeah.
Just in terms of also appropriate trees, like, hence my example here is, you know, cedars. So often the cedars are used, and the cedars are wonderful and they're native, but they're a shade tolerant tree. They don't like to be out in the open, they tend to die. It's just, you know, in terms of appropriate placement.
Nick, before you go, can you scroll up a little bit?
Yeah.
A little farther. Okay, see where it says three significant trees?
Yeah.
Now scroll down. A little farther. Three, the number didn't update.
Oh.
So that should be four, shouldn't it?
Yeah, we'll fix that.
Okay, then also under, I guess would be under subsection F, except I'm not seeing it there. There's a whole big, bless you, block. So this is verbiage from twenty point one-two-eight point zero-five, five, zero landscaping native plant species.
That was my original word draft. That was landscaping laws.
Okay, where, where is that, any of that talked about in here?
It's in the subdivision code. It's um, the landscape code. I think we're, was this where we were talking about buffers?
Well, I was using, talking about using the same verbiage that you use in the landscape code and the significant tree and canopy cover codes for certain descriptions of trees. And I don't have that version of mine. I don't remember exactly what it said, but it just seemed like it was a more precise descriptors. Which is why I kind of threw it in that original word draft I had put together.
Okay, so.
I'm not sure, Nick made a convincing argument for me to say, okay, don't worry about it. I don't remember what.
Without being able to see what you have there, I'm not quite sure.
I could show you if it's a point, then it's not in there.
You responded in your comments back to me.
I'd have to look back, I'm not. Can you make a note on this one about?
It really just, my comment was, if if this is somehow incorporated somewhere in the document, my comment is, it talks about, you know, native species or hardy waterwise, and my thought is that I disagree with the or part. It seems to me if we're removing a native, it should be replaced with a native.
Yeah. So this is requiring that already, so.
And we have, we have a listing attached in the landscape that talks about the approved native trees.
Oh.
Or disapproved native trees.
Is there a list in here? Carrie, I can't remember.
I don't know enough, familiar enough with tree species in there.
I don't think there is anymore. I think there used to be.
There.
So this includes shrubs and other plants beyond just trees.
So that's why it was that or, or, that kind of thought, ooh, wait a minute.
This is for landscaping areas, not for significant tree replacement. So is there still another question here, Mark, whether we have those trees?
I was just concerned with the idea of replacing native trees. So you cut down a stand of alders, and you're going to replace them with a stand of alders or a stand of maples. I mean, those are native trees, but is that really, do we want the alders, they're not, yeah, they're not a desirable tree.
To you, maybe.
The cow pillars love them too.
The soil are very beneficial, it's funny. They have a good line on the boulevard.
Well, now we, now we require a replacement of deciduous trees with deciduous and evergreen with evergreen. So there's at least some control there, and.
Yeah.
I mean, alders like a certain environment and um, you know, chances are, if alders are growing there, it's because, there's a reason that they're growing there.
They like that water. Okay, so going back to where we just were under subsection F, do you remember the, let me give you the chapter number again?
Yeah, I've got it.
Oh, yeah? Okay. I'm looking at. There with here. Um, David, can you tell me, is this also something that you added in? Yeah, I know you did this, but here, and then it continues here.
I think that came out of landscaping.
Okay.
Code.
All right, so.
It was one of those things I thought wasn't necessarily a bad idea, but we got to the deciduous and evergreen to deciduous and evergreen. So I think that.
My, my concern was the shrubs. I'm like, well, we don't want shrubs in there.
Yeah, that's why, because it came out of the landscaping.
Okay. All right. Uh, gee, it'll go up if you want. That's been taken out. There was a statement that says, becomes diseased or is removed within ten years of planting. The within ten years of planting is red here.
It's when it becomes diseased or is removed.
Yeah, that was one of my comments.
Oh, that was on yours.
Basically saying they had to be, and that's where we were kind of talking about the, oh, the, like inspection at two and five years or something that you were talking about.
See, I, I commented that that was a nice addition.
My thought is, you know, the tree dies at year seven, there's nobody there to check it, how do we know? That was that earlier conversation.
But we are checking at a five, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're doing our maintenance inspection before we release the bond and um, yeah, I mean, realistically, our ability to check even at five, it's a really hard thing for us to accommodate right now.
I was gonna say, who's the tree inspector?
Could we include within?
Stephanie, Stephanie or Jim are planters.
Can we include after or is removed, put within five years of planting? Because who knows, maybe in five years from now, we'll have the city staff.
To make it easier for them, any reason you just can't require them to send you a photo of their landscaping? And you compare it to the prior photo on, um, file. You know, the tree disappeared.
This is, this is indefinite. Yeah, this is indefinite.
What is it?
It just says you have to maintain this, and and so.
Forever.
It is a violation.
But we're expecting up to five years.
Yeah, yeah, you're just talking about inspections, which I don't think we have the ability to do. But the requirements that exist, whether you do it or not is another story. And if we have, if the, if the homeowners association or somebody in the neighborhood complains, we say, yeah, actually, these people removed these trees without permission, then they're going to have to be replaced by the HOA. And we can do an enforcement, we just have to be alerted to the situation.
So we give you a self-appointed tree patrol.
I can't wait to see your badge.
It's made out of wood.
He's gonna go home tonight, do a little whittling.
Get out the old wood burner.
Oh, yes, okay.
That just made you old boo.
All right, so here's, okay, so I left myself a note, so just, I'll just read my note, all right? Okay, so I've got a here. Uh, site A is a one acre in size, right, and it has a mature forest on it. Site A gets logged, okay, and now it's just sitting empty for X number of years. Let's say it's five years, let's say it's ten years. And then meanwhile, you've got basically your shrub, crap, alder, grown up. Okay, so X number of years goes by, and the property owner decides to develop this land. What then is the tree retention policy? Is it based on the original trees or the new small little poles that have popped up on site?
It depends. If they log their, they, so they have to get a permit to log their site today. So you can't just go in and log a site and then let, it would be based on the current trees today.
And you said that's been in place about a year.
That's been in place since March. If somebody ten years ago logged the site and now it's mostly alders, then they are just aiming for the thirty percent or whatever the percentage is. And so they still have to go to thirty percent, but we have no way to go back and document what was there.
Right, but now we can.
But, yeah, so, so we're just going to aim for the percentage, and going forward, they're going to, uh, that site will become reforested as an urban area.
Okay, so this would be, chapter twenty point one-two-nine point zero-six-zero, tree canopy requirements for residential development. Section four, subsection B. And maybe we've already addressed this. Ooh, I think we already did. Yes, okay, yeah, yeah, I put need a minimum size versus the, yes, okay, we already got that. And that was it?
Anybody else have comments or questions?
I've got about twenty pages of questions.
So then I guess where we're at right now is we have a mark, we have a few corrections. If the planning commission wanted to make a recommendation to approve this with staff to fill in a couple of blanks on these tables and adjust these percentages, we can do that. Alternatively, you could ask to have these changes made and have it come back to you in March, and then you can vote on it then. So it's, it's really up to you on whether you want to see this again before it would go to council.
Who's going to be making changes? Will that be you, Nick, or Carrie?
Carrie and I.
I'll make, while you're gone, I'll go ahead and make the initial changes so that it's ready for you when you come back.
Yeah, I think if.
I just, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
So what are your instincts at this point, having listened to our conversation this evening?
Well, actually.
Considering we have the diameters and.
I think we can get, we can come up with something, but now that I'm thinking about it, I'm going to be out of town the next two weeks. The twenty-fifth of February is the first date I could take this forward, and I don't know that I'm going to have enough time with Carrie between now and then to bring it to city council, and your next meeting is on the third. So there's really no reason we can't bring it back to you. So let's, let's bring it back to you in March, and then you can.
Sounds good.
Vote on it at that time.
Nick, Carrie, did you have any, based on these changes, do you have any concerns about chilling effects for development?
I think this is going to help. I think that the, what we adopted last March, where if you have a forested site, it makes it really hard to do anything with that site because of the replacement ratios. So this is going to make it easier to develop an urban forested site, you know, not talking about critical areas, but sites that are high and dry. And um, I don't think it's going to have much effect on, on other sites, because if they have significant trees, they already have to replace them, so that's staying the same.
Yeah, I think this look, this might look like it's making it harder because it's a bunch of new regulations, but because of what he's saying, that the, the ratio right now of replacement is almost impossible to meet on a wooded site, this actually makes it easier.
Great. And even with the deciduous and evergreen tracking, and even with the higher percentages of canopy ratios.
Correct.
Still easier.
Yeah. I will say that McCormick Woods is a little different because they have development agreements that have vested them to hold codes. And so this is not something that's likely to apply to McCormick Woods, unless they come in with a new subdivision application. Um, they are possibly going to be doing that on McCormick North. However, McCormick West and the rest of McCormick Woods in this area, with the exception of, of parcel A, they just filed an application on, you may have seen some emails on that. And then they have parcel B, which was not part of the original subdivision. Those are the only areas where this could potentially apply if they came in with an application after this is adopted. But like I said, parcel A already came in.
So far, McCormick Woods have been, has been fairly well, fairly effective.
It's a little different than the new phases. I think that these buffers are a little thinner than the old ones, but.
And what did you say, there's like twenty-five hundred slots up there? Isn't that what you told us?
Oh, there's, there's fifteen hundred in McCormick Woods. There's another four hundred and fifty or so in McCormick Woods. There's five hundred in McCormick North, so.
And those applications have already been approved.
That's already all approved, yeah.
What's that one on Glenwood? How many go in there?
The first phase, nineteen ninety-nine, the next phase, I think, will, is another hundred or so.
Did McCormick Woods get their water chute squirreled away?
Yes. Uh, well, we have an agreement for the next, the first. Phase of the water situation. There's a second reservoir that's going to be needed down the road as well as additional wells, and we're still working on those longer-term projects.
Did you say like reservoir, literally reservoir for drinking water?
Yeah, like steel towers, like water towers.
Okay, all right.
Anything else on this issue before we move to the next one?
Thank you.
Thanks for catching me. The private road.
Oh, so we're, we're holding off on the vote until March third.
Who cares?
To give us time to make the revisions that we've proposed.
So moving on to B, the McCormick community request for revision for certain design standards.
Oh, right. So um, give me a little background on where this is coming from. We, first of all, we'll go, we'll go back to two thousand twelve or thirteen. I think when we adopted single-family design standards and design standards that applied to residential housing, a lot of it was because of what we saw being built out at the Ridge, which was um, a development that Quadrant did uh, back in two thousand eight. And just the overall appearance of the houses was um, not, not real exciting. They, they're building different products today.
That's your house?
Good job, Dan.
That's somebody's house.
Kevin and I actually looked at houses out there, and we were looking for a house.
The, I'm just going to pull up the plan. So the first phase of McCormick North, we approved um, late last year. I just got to find the file here.
I like the name Trailer Park.
Trailer Park?
Pat.
Pat. That was a twenty eighteen?
Wow, really?
Takes a long time to.
Is that gas station still going over by the roundabouts?
Oh, yeah, they've been doing.
As far as I know. They, they don't have building permits yet, but they do have site permits to do their site work. So out here at the intersection of Figley and Old Clifton is the first phase of McCormick North. It was just, they just picked up the permits a couple of weeks ago. Um, this is the first eighty-eight homes that are going in out here. And the developer of these homes, which is also Quadrant, has agreed to purchase those, has been going through our design standards and trying to come up with house plans for these lots, and have run into a couple of hiccups. And a lot of what is in our design standard, some of it was adopted a few years ago, and some of it was adopted this past March, and they had some questions and concerns about certain things and are, are looking to offer product types that are successful in terms of what buyers want and what they want to, and what they're able to sell. So um. So, there's a number of issues I wanna walk through in our code that are currently required and which have raised some, some questions. The first of those, if you go to your packet, the staff report has a picture of a house showing a minimum ground floor elevation. One of the things that we did when we adopted our code in March, you guys actually finished reviewing, I think, in late 2018, we adopted a minimum ground floor elevation and the idea was that when you build new houses, we wanted the house slightly elevated above the street and that both gives the residents of the house a little bit of privacy, but it was, it was done in conjunction with reducing the front yard setback. What has been pointed out to us and as part of the, let me go back to these plans here. Some of the, and once I get in here, there's topo. Some of these lots are sloping downhill away from the street. I think-
So house is lower than the street level?
The house is lower. So, in order to build the house above the sidewalk, it's, it's both expensive and just challenging because you're building huge footings where, on houses that don't actually have basements. So, they said that, they asked number one, is there a way to change the code? Because this really doesn't work on sites where there's a lot of topography. On a flat site, this makes sense, but when you're actually sloping away, then it becomes very costly. So, our thought was, one solution to this would be to, with an increased front yard setback, yes, you can not elevate the house. Because we lowered the front yard setback from 15 to 10 feet as part of our code update. If you go back to 15 feet, would we consider doing away with this requirement and they would have a little bit bigger front yard, which helps create that privacy-
From the sidewalk back, is that what you're saying?
From the property line. So the sidewalk is in the street, sometimes the property line is right at the edge of the sidewalk, sometimes it's a little further back.
So the property line instead of 10 feet. Cause didn't, I'm trying to remember all this, didn't they originally want bigger backyards and smaller front yards?
They, they did, yes.
To have more fan, private family time.
Yes, however, this elevation issue is problematic.
Okay.
I think with the price of concrete, I, I got a quote to just pour a 20 by 20 slab in my carport, which is gravel right now and I was shocked by-
How much was it?
Uh, the first guy wanted 9,000.
Whoa!
For a slab?
Dang, where are you going with that?
Dude, I was thinking about putting in a slab.
And, and it's not, the cost of concrete isn't that much, but the cost of concrete labor is really high. So I think, I think-
I'm in the wrong.
If you're elevating a house like this. Yeah, I, I don't think this guy needed the work, but, anyway. The, I think that this probably makes sense that they provide the extra setback to allow for a reduction in this. This is one that I was pretty comfortable with. And so, right now, I just wanted to check the pulse of the planning commission to see if this is something that is worth bringing forward because you would consider it, or if it's kind of a non-starter in terms of things that you want to see.
So the, the people who wanted to change it originally realized with the answer that was given, that they would like to change it again? So it'll be more accommodating? I'm just not sure it's those people.
No, it's different.
Oh, it's different people.
McCormick Communities develops the lots. Quadrant bought the lots from McCormick Communities and so they're the one who chooses what house gets built on it. So now, in this area, they're wanting to build houses and the front yard setback isn't as important as getting the house back down closer to grade.
Okay. Wait, so Quadrant bought the properties knowing what our design standards were prior to purchase?
Quadrant came to us and met with us before they bought the property. We said that we can't make the change, but we can agree to take it to the planning commission so that it can be discussed. So, we said that yes, we will, we will take the issue to you, to the planning commission. We can't promise any outcomes and so they're in the process, I don't know if they've closed yet or not. They may still be in feasibility, but they're, they're certainly looking to buy this.
Do you have a picture of what one would, what the two different things would look like?
I do. However, I'm not signed into my email right now. Do we have any of that stuff saved anywhere, Carrie, in terms of what Quadrant provided us? I know it's in my email, but I don't know where else it would be.
Yeah, it's in my email too.
Alright, I'm gonna go here and just do a quick search. What was her name, Barbara? I don't, was it Barbara?
Maybe search for Quadrant, like maybe it came from like quadranthomes.com or something.
Yeah. That's it.
I don't think that's-
Oh, there's the-
Side entry imagery.
I think this is, I think this is older, I'm talking about, I think we met before Christmas, right?
Oh, then you might have gotten something emailed that I didn't get. Those are the ones that were emailed to me.
Oh, let's just read her emails.
Public records.
Exactly.
That's not it. Alright, well, I'm gonna check one other place here. Just gonna walk over to my office, I may still have a freaking copy on the desk.
I mean, I don't have a personal problem, I just with it, I just found it interesting that, you know, we voted on it because they wanted to change it and that was a big deal, remember, do you guys remember that?
It was because McCormick wanted us to change it, but now this new company bought it for McCormick.
Probably so they could sell it. Made it more desirable to what they wanted with their standard.
Or they just didn't think about it.
Or they just automatically assume that the planning commission is gonna agree to their changes.
Could be.
What's baby quip independent, what is that?
Well, I'd be curious, Nick, do you know the McCormick Vicki and Chris Association? How would they feel about the change?
Some of these small businesses show up in the residential property.
This area is across Old Clifton from the main part of McCormick, so I don't, the, the association doesn't seem to have a whole lot of preference for what happens on that side compared to what happens in their backyard.
The low rent side they don't care about.
Correct. So here's, here's an example, this is something that they developed on a site where it slopes a little bit away from the road, but the house, the driveway just slopes down a little bit towards the house and the house isn't elevated as high. So, you know, my opinion on this is that, I'm just gonna get your seat. My opinion on this is that I'm okay with this change and the re, part of the reason is that the, the code that we adopted was this model code that was developed. And it was developed for a community that while it's in the mountains, the community is totally flat. And I think doing this in a flat area of Idaho where you're in a, a big valley and the whole town is, you know, maybe got 20 feet of, of elevation change, this is easy to do, in Port Orange it's a lot harder. So, I'm comfortable with, with bringing this forward and I was going, I told them that I would recommend this change as opposed to the other ones where I was really not sure and I wanted to get an opinion from the planning commission because I was less, less comfortable making that kind of recommendation.
So this would go from 10 feet elevated to 15 feet?
At grade.
At grade. And how much of a drop in the grade are there, is there in some of these areas? I mean, are we talking like six inches or six feet or 16 feet?
I believe these are two-foot intervals, so some of these lots have 10 or 15 feet going down here.
And are we talking the entire development or just the sloping lots?
Well, if they take the extra setback, they can build it at grade. They may choose to take, to build it at 10 feet rather than 15 in some areas where it makes sense. So it, it could be a combination of the two.
So we guys should create perhaps some variations?
Yeah.
And the five foot difference comes off, or comes off the backyard?
Oh, and it's down.
There's a 10 feet to 15, then the backyard can be five feet shorter.
Yeah. So, so anyway, I would, I would like to bring that forward as a, as a change, unless there's an objection at this time and we would start working on that for March or April to bring that forward. The next issue, Quadrant, I'm gonna actually, we're gonna go on a little field trip to Paulsboro here.
I'm sorry, Nick, did you say that's coming, I don't listen anymore, is this topic coming back, is that what he said?
I'll, I'll bring that issue back as part of a proposal that's more clearly defined.
I have the house for a while when I sold it.
So out here in Paulsboro, this is a-
There are, there are no trees there.
Well, there are, they just haven't gotten, they haven't grown them.
Give them 20 years.
Yeah.
They've got a housing type here-
I'm not gonna be here in 20 years.
Trying to find one of the examples. They are doing a housing type where the front door of the house is a side door off of a porch that is oriented more front to back rather than side to side. And they do this both on interior lots where you're in between two houses, but then also on corner lots. And when I looked at this requirement, I felt very comfortable allowing that sort of thing on a corner lot like on this house here because it, it actually, the door is still facing the street. Our code currently says that, let's see, it says entrance facing primary street required. However, the entrance isn't clearly defined as whether the porch is oriented towards the street or whether the door is oriented towards the street. My reading is that the door would be oriented towards the street. And on a corner lot, it already meets that, although it's not the primary street, it's, it's a street. So this change would, could do one of two things if it was considered. It could either allow the side entries on corner lots but not on interior lots, or it could allow them in all circumstances. And I think the, the concerns that Carrie and I raised were number one, if the houses are close together and the door is now facing the, your neighbor, there's potential noise issues with either slamming the door, door or people coming and going if the door is open.
Less privacy.
I always think that looks good.
But I will tell you, the challenge that they have, when, when you allow a two-car garage on a lot like this, let me go back down to this, one down the hill a little ways. I think it was one more. When you have a, that one's actually a front entry. But the difficulty is that if you, if the door enters sideways, it has to do with the interior configuration. What, what ends up happening is they're building these rooms on the front of the house that are too small to be, it's, it's a weird place for a bedroom. It's kind of a non-functional den type location. And I, I don't think that they provide, I, I think unless this area is usable and also the area behind this wall is usable, they're, they're not making the most out of the square footage that they're building. And so, homeowners aren't getting a lot for their money maybe in that sort of layout.
But isn't that their choice? And isn't that the builder's choice of what they want to-
Become a market issue. If people don't like it, they won't buy it.
Right.
Well, they're selling.
I don't know.
So, so the way that it was explained to me was that, that this is a very popular design for the interior spaces that it creates for buyers. I don't know if, I might have, I don't remember if there was a floor plan here that showed this. So I guess the question is, are you open to it on corner lots? And are you open to it on, on interior lots? So here's an example of, of this, this door being on the side here, but what you see is they're putting a bedroom up here, but-
It's, yeah, you enter an open plan.
Basically what you do is if you, if you have a house along here, you end up with the door at the end and this has to get narrower and it becomes like a kind of a dead space. Either the garage has to get bigger or the house has to get much wider in order to accommodate a two-car garage on a smaller lot. And that side entry allows them to make this space usable because otherwise it has to be a porch going to the door.
But, but again, isn't that their choice as a, as a business owner of what they wanna build? I mean, I can see why we decide, I mean, why we talk about the trees and stuff, but why do we need to go into what they're building and what they're selling?
Well, I don't think we're in our place to talk about what the inside looks like.
Exactly, I don't think so either.
Our place is what the outside is.
I'd be alright with the corner lot situation, that side entrance, but not so much the interior lots.
I mean, this development is better looking than some that we already have in our own town.
Exactly.
I mean, it doesn't mean I, it's not, you know, I mean, is this more affordable housing, Nick? I mean, no, it's not, okay.
This, the McCormick North area is going to be less expensive than McCormick Woods.
And are they thinking of something like this with the size of entry? It's, is it a possibility?
They, they would like to do some of their lots with this, with this sort of floor plan. It's one of their floor plans that they have, it's one of their most successful floor plans, it's something that consumers want.
So it's desired.
Yeah, so why don't we wanna, I mean, it's kinda like somebody here doesn't like what it looks like and doesn't wanna have it here. I think that's what it is.
I think, I think we're supposed to look at what everyone would want.
Yeah, I think going back to the example of the Ridge, I mean, a lot of these houses sort of do the same thing. And what we don't, you know, the houses dimensionally are not that different.
That's ugly. See, that's the same thing, it just doesn't have a, have a porch on it.
Clearly side entry can be okay, right?
Yeah, these ones are like a diagonal entry, but, but there's actually no living space for, in the forward area of the house. It's only the garage and the room that's above the garage. So that's what we're trying to get away from, but in order to have a two-car garage, you have to have a wider house, which requires wider lots. Or you have to do a tandem garage, which is a single car door, one in front of the other rather than side by side.
Pre-designed standards.
Part of it is that there's no space between houses.
Oh, this is pre-designed standards, that's why it can look like this.
Yeah, so I mean, this is a-
What year is this about, does anyone know?
They were built, they were still building these when I got here, but I think it, this was 2008 through 2012. But that was also the recession, I mean, that was-
This is what you get with recession.
Yeah, but I mean, if you look at the, the shutters and the detailing, it can, it can be as nice, you know, as detailed or with more windows, but that's really a more premium product and that cost, that adds to the cost. So I don't know whether we're gonna get all of these architectural features if we allow that, if we allow the side door or not.
Well, this is Paulsboro and Paulsboro has design standards too, so.
I don't think it's that bad.
I don't either, I think it's more attractive than what we've been seeing.
They just need to fix their lawns.
So, so I'm hearing-
Don't come to my house.
A definite on the corner lot and-
I'm open to either, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm open to what they wanna do, I mean, they all have to live with it.
I trust staff with regard to the interior lots.
It's, I understand both sides of the argument, but I, I think that from a functional standpoint, there is something lost when the porch is sideways and when the door is around the corner from the, the front of the house.
Cause we're looking at the side of their house now. I mean, it feels very side.
Yeah.
But I always think it's weird to have a garage in your front door right next to each other anyway, so I don't think it's any less attractive or any less functional, I think-
Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda with you. I, I mean, and I've seen developments elsewhere where side entry is fine regardless of the lot, but, you know, staff, staff seems comfortable with corner lots.
And with the side entry too, they do have a long covered porch, it does rain here nine months out of the year, you could, I can understand that. You know, if they have kids, that's desirable.
So, so the way that I would handle, I mean, if the planning commission is comfortable with this approach, we could simply interpret the front entrance to mean there has to be a porch facing the primary street as opposed to the door. Or we can change the code to, to say that the front door does not, can face-
Cause it also seems like these houses are so close together, everyone is fenced. I mean, I mean, they all seem, they have a privacy boundary even if they're houses.
Well, that house opens onto like that person's garage, so it's not like if they slam their door, like people are gonna be in the house going-
Oh my gosh, they're slamming their door again. I mean, they have took some thought into how they were doing.
They can hear them yelling upstairs in the windows.
Doesn't look like that matters.
They don't raise voices in neighborhoods that look like this.
The kids are all in computers.
So, so, I get that since everybody's fine with the corner lot, how many people would like to see an ordinance that also allows them to interior lots?
I like what you said, as long as there's that like covered porch. Yeah, cause it still gives the appearance of, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, we will bring forward something that, that paves the way for that type of development.
Again, can we explain this to city council when it comes to them?
Sure.
The roof part is important.
We should have a representative.
Okay.
I was thinking about that.
Here is the next issue that we, we uncovered. When we adopted the design standards in 20.139, the code, we, we required that all houses provide a porch. But then when we adopted the form-based code, we required the porch would be a half 50% of the width of the house.
That seems huge.
Well, it, it's not huge on a house that doesn't have an attached garage. It is huge on a house that has an attached garage. And I don't know, Carrie, did we actually, oh, so I, I've got the rendering here in the packet. I just sketched this up to say that, I've issued an interpretation because this was causing a major problem because if you have a two-car garage and a 40-foot house, your entire house except the garage has to be porch. And if you have less than a 40-foot house, it is, your porch would encroach on your garage. So it's, it's just, is unworkable for houses of a certain dimension. I think our goal here would be to redefine this code requirement to say that any portion of your house that is a garage, so in this case, if, if this is the garage, anything in the garage or above the garage is not considered part of the house width when determining 50%. So then your porch has to be- So then your porch has to be 50% from the occupied portion, which this is a little bit short actually. Which is gonna lead into our next discussion point. So, so I, is everybody comfortable with that interpretation that we, we did not intend for houses with attached garages to be a 50% porch? Okay. So then their other thing that they wanna do is they've done, and this is an example on page five in your packet. They've got a porch design which is not six feet deep for the entire width of the porch, but they designed the roof line of the porch so that the porch actually wraps around the front of the house and you have a little bit of a step, so it's like two feet in front of the bay window and six feet where the door is. And that's a way of giving kinda the appearance of a porch without actually having to build a porch that is six feet deep for the entire width of the porch.
That's not hideous.
So I, yeah, I, I don't have a huge problem with it, but as our code is currently written, I believe it, it requires some revision to accommodate this. And so, um, I wanted to verify that, that the planning commission would be comfortable with that one forward.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, um, stoops instead of porches. So, in our horn based code, we also adopt, adopted a code that allows a stoop instead of a porch. Um, I haven't actually seen an example of a stoop used on a house that, that are wanting to build. But our code, if we allow stoops and we allow porches, right now our code, our code says you have to do a porch even though it has a provision to allow a stoop.
Dick, tell me, I'm sorry, I'm confused. The difference between a porch and a stoop is?
Look at the pictures on page four and five. So a porch is, the roof is supported by posts. They go from the, the slab or the decking to the, to support the roof. A stoop is, is more like what you see on a brownstone in New York or something where you have steps going up to it. And you might have an awning hanging out, but it's, it's usually free floating.
Oh, okay, okay.
Or, or there's no awning at all. It's, it might just be, um, it might just be steps going up to a flat area in front of the house. And so they wanted to know whether stoops were allowed in addition, as, in lieu of a porch or whether it had to be the porch example, because if so, why do we have a stoop in our code?
So what is it, what is?
I, I think we wanna allow stoops certainly for townhomes and some attached housing. I'm not sure on single family. Um, I think the porch is, I could see a very modern architectural design as having a stoop. I don't really see it in more of a traditional design like, you know, with the crafting elements that you see in, in a lot of the products that they're showing us as examples.
On Hilltop, they're doing a bunch of, few lots of modern homes with stoops.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I think there is a place for it. Um, I don't need to, I don't know that we need to be so rigid. So I'd, I'd be comfortable allowing either or.
Alright, I like your recommendation.
Alright.
You're just tired.
I get up at 3:30.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
I, is that everything, Carrie? Oh, the driveway widths. So the other thing they wanted is when we adopted our townhome code, we said that for attached townhomes, if it's less than 30 feet, you only get a one car garage because we didn't want your entire townhome being garage doors. They said we'd like to do two car garage townhomes and they provided a photo example on page seven. And the challenge there is that you have almost continuous concrete from unit to unit with a very thin amount of landscaping between them. And I, you know, I said, I don't, I don't recommend changing the code that we've adopted. If you wanna do two car garages, build alleys and come off the back of the townhome rather than the front to create an attractive front. But they still requested that the planning commission consider, um, allowing for two car garage towns.
So what's the desire now with two car garages? Just cause everyone has two cars or?
Everybody wants, everybody wants a two car garage and the tandem solution, which is one in front of the other, is too much of a hassle for consumers. I mean, I personally think that if, if I had a tandem garage, the second space would be storage and the first space would be car.
I think that's exactly what it would be.
But, um, so you wouldn't have, but you're still gonna have somebody potentially in the driveway blocking the person who needs to get out of the garage as opposed to being able to take either vehicle at any time.
That's a lot of concrete.
It is.
It is, and this is.
It makes it look commercial.
Do you think this is more like future development in downtown? Cause that's what I'm thinking.
Like a garage.
Well, it could be. Um, I think that there, they would like to do this in other areas of the city as well, but I, I don't have any specific.
Like how we were talking about, or they're talking about doing the 3D model or whatever, you know, in certain areas of show of development?
Yeah.
So this is kinda what I was thinking they were thinking?
Well, in the old part of town, I remember we have alleys all over the place. So if you're, you know, if you're up in the South Park.
I park on my alley.
There I am.
I park in my alley.
So yeah, all of these alleys here, on these streets, if house redeveloped and became three townhomes, the driveways would be off the back anyway and it wouldn't matter. And the front would look really attractive as just townhomes that you walk up to the porch and it's nice landscaping and it, you know, it feels good. If you're, you know, alleys cost more money to develop than, than just having access up the street because it's like building an extra road. And, um, so it's more costly for sure. But, um, yeah, I think, I think this is just too much concrete personally.
I would agree. If Steph doesn't support this request, I don't either.
Because I'm already doing that.
Listen, Carrie. The last one, cottage courts. So we allow cottage clusters on the little, not tiny houses, but smaller houses that share one common lawn area. And there's examples all over the Puget Sound of this type of development. In some of those, they're allowing carriage houses above the garage structure. So they have a common garage where all the units have a single bay within the garage building. But they're actually allowing a building, a unit to be built on top of that. And so they said, hey, can we amend the cottage cluster code to allow for carriage houses as part of that development? I see no reason not to allow that sort of thing, but, um, that requires a code change, so. I would be supportive of it, but I don't wanna.
Is this an example of what they wanna do?
Yeah, so, and I'll let me go, I'm gonna zoom in to.
Is that the back?
So you're, you're famineist design? Is that what I'm hearing you say? Yeah, that's like off the alleyway, right?
I can't wait for 30 years from now. People are like, what were they thinking?
What were they thinking, right?
So an example of one of these projects, this one doesn't have the two story units.
Too many pot stores.
But this is a really nice cottage development over in Redmond or in our like. They have a community building. They have all the clusters that.
That's adorable.
That go around the, the, um.
Why can't we build this?
Right?
Cause those are, in 2005, those were $500,000 a piece for a 12 hour car per house.
What? It was in Redmond.
But, so they have eight units here, but then they have this garage structure. And what they wanna be able to do is if they provide the garage bays, they wanna put an extra unit on top of this as part of this muster.
How is that even a good idea with car fumes and all that? I thought we weren't supposed to be living.
We have a firewall between the garage and.
No big deal.
Everybody's gonna be.
I'm laughing at the person who owns that unit.
What's wrong?
Oh, I bought the one, I bought the unit above the garages.
That's true.
This is a sale unit.
It's a little cheaper.
Car alarm's going off again, damn it.
Roger up and down.
I don't look above cars and noisy children. Any day.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Or barking dogs.
So it's not a living unit? It's a storage unit?
Well, who knows? Who knows how they're actually using their garages? But that door may not be opening daily because it's full of junk.
What we're talking about is a lot of somebody live on top of the carriage house.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and with the building code, that, I believe that unit would have to be fire sprinkled because it's, it's a use with a residential use, since they gotta have a firewall and a sprinkler system. And so that firewall is actually gonna provide some sound insulation as well.
And you're good with it?
I'm, I'm fine with it. I mean, if it's a way to get an extra unit in there and provide an affordable, a more affordable unit, it seems like a reasonable thing to allow.
Okay, that's, that is just one unit on top of the stalls, not like compartments?
Correct.
Multiple.
Okay. If you were a kid, you'd, you'd think you'd lived in like a mansion if you had that, you know?
So is this on a sloping, this picture here, is this on a sloping grade or is?
I'm not sure where that is. They didn't, they couldn't tell us where that one, that photo came from. They didn't remember.
You have like a ramp you have to walk up to to get to the, to that unit?
I assume it's stairs. Probably between the two buildings, there's like a staircase. So anyway, um, well, that's good. I think they'll, um, they'll be happy, uh, that we're bringing this forward. And obviously we still have to see what it looks like and develop the code, but I didn't wanna spend a lot of time writing code yet there wasn't support for it to even.
Will they name a street after us?
I'll, I'll throw it out there. Is that Planning Commission Avenue or is it?
PC.
Each of these.
Yeah.
PC Place.
Yeah, there you go.
Alright, we have one more thing, um.
And to Steph, true.
First initial, first initial.
One more thing on the agenda. Did you already pass those out?
I did, but it was not.
It's not on the agenda, but one announcement. We hired the consultant to do our downtown master. And they, um, were just kicking that process off. I think that the first public involvement's probably gonna start in March. However, going into this project, I know that some of my coun, some of the council members had some, some ideas about how they wanted things to be done and what, what sort of things they really want to consider. And so I asked our consultant to put together a questionnaire that's just for planning commission and just for council so that on the front end of things, they understand what your expectations are. And so as they're designing their public outreach, they kind of, it, it, I don't want you identifying, we need to fix this particular street. It's not pinpointing specific projects, but it's, it's really what, what do you wanna see? What are, what do you see as our assets? Is there anything that you, any information you believe that we need to consider? Like I know one of my council members really wants the market study to really look at, to dive down into, um, like a, a economic development analysis where they're looking at what is, what are our actual demands for goods and services as opposed to what does the community just say that they want downtown it because it may not be viable? So I think there's a, you know, there's a desire to see some viability, uh, analysis.
Like a community center, like that kinda stuff?
Yeah, I mean, any of that stuff, um, you know, or you could just say, hey, I just, I just want a plan that can be implemented. I don't want a plan that is totally dreaming and, and just sits on a shelf collecting dust.
Correct.
Um, so there's, there's any number of things you can provide. And some of these, you can just say, uh, I have nothing, you know, I have no, no answer to this right now, but, um, it's an opportunity. You can either email this or, or drop off hard copies with Carrie. Um, or bring it to the next planning commission meeting and we'll get it to the consultant. But you just wanted your, your input before we really kick things off.
I just remember we got $13 million allotted to that community center. So in that community center, say what you want in it and think about what the people would want.
I will email this also in Word to everybody. And if you wanna make it as easy as, in, in each of those questions, if you just wanna insert your answers in there to make it easier for yourselves and then email it back to me, I'll compile them.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
You have a downtown core committee of some sort?
Nothing over up.
I'm on it. I don't remember what the name of it was. We have one meeting in like 10 years. Pardon?
No, PAPA, no.
No, there was an advisory board for the community center.
No.
With Katz App Bank.
It was like the downtown core, something or other.
How long ago?
I don't know how to dig for mine.
Was it the design review?
Maybe.
Did we do?
Might have been there. And that was tricky for downtown core. I think that was it. Are they involved in this thing at all?
I don't even know what that is. I don't think I was here at the time.
Oh, okay.
As far as I know, it's a still standing committee. It just never has anything to do. It was supposed to look over, um.
I don't think it's a standing committee. Oh, the designer review board?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, that doesn't exist anymore.
Oh, it just, it disappeared? That's probably.
So do you wanna? Is there any other business?